It's pretty good, yeah. I mean, it always can always be a little better.
Well, and I see that. Is that the line though? Yeah. But, I mean, still, it's busy. That's gonna be.
I mean, over way over here.
He's got one. He's just running back. No messes it. Yeah, sorry.
Sorry. Well, part of the thing is that they're pretty. Oh, we made it. Oh, like, oh, yeah. We did this for upstairs and. I don't know. I don't know. Very easy. Thank you. So excited. But. In town, it's me. No, they're actually in L.A. It's kind of the perfect. Sure. Yeah. Just to be here. Oh, come on. Okay. I think we were. Yeah. I don't want to get on the phone. After several years.
No, thank. I. Well, amen.
So. Oh, yeah. Other side of the side. Yeah. They caught us. They're still playing. I'm like. Totally against the law. It's. I think very, I think very. All right. Thank you. So you hear that sentence. Yeah. It's like.
A little thing, a little thing that's kind of cool.
A little thing? It's like.
Sorry, gentlemen. I have to go. We should do this.
Yeah. I don't know. I don't know any of that.
Recording in progress.
You could call. Uh, four. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Moving right along. Any court challenge to the action taken on public hearing items on this agenda may be limited to consideration. Only those issues raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city of San Luis Obispo at or prior to the public hearing. If you wish to speak, please give your name and address for the record. Please limit your comments to three minutes. The first hearing item, item 4A is the public hearing item before us is a review to request, is a review, a request to modify an existing conditional use permit to add delivery services to a cannabis retail storefront operation located at 280 Higera Street. Would, I would like to ask each commissioner for the ex parte of contact with anyone who has provided information to commissioners not on the record so that information may be used as part of the decision-making process. No? All right, very good. Would Cannabis Business Course Coordinator Ivana Gomez, please represent the report?
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Toly. Hi, everyone, good evening. My name is Ivana Gomez. I'm the Cannabis Business Coordinator, and tonight I'll be presenting a request to modify an existing conditional use permit to add delivery services to a cannabis retail storefront operation. The recommendation today is to approve the request based on updated findings and subject to revised conditions of approval. The Planning Commission may review the proposed modification to conditional use permit number Use 0550-2019 for consistency with the general plan and zoning regulations and adopt a resolution to amend the use permit in accordance with the request. The applicant, Megan's Organic Market, is one of two existing cannabis retail storefronts in the city. The site is located at 280 Higera Street in a retail commercial zone. It's also located in a mixed-use overlay zone as well as in the mid-Higera cannabis business overlay zone. So in November of 2019, Megan's Organic Market was granted its first conditional use permit, and in August of 2020, Megan's began operating in San Luis Obispo. So they've actually just reached their five-year mark. In October 1st of 2024, the City Council adopted ordinance number 1740, which allowed retail storefronts to amend their conditional use permits to add delivery services. So in June 5th of 2025, Megan's applied to amend their conditional use permit consistent with the adopted zoning regulations. So here's a look at what ordinance 1740 amended. It amended Table 2-1 within the city zoning regulations to really just provide a pathway for existing retail storefronts to add delivery services to their operation. Prior to this, the city did not allow retail storefronts to deliver, so it was necessary to create some type of pathway for our existing operators to do so. Under state law, retail storefronts are entitled to deliver by default. So a little bit about the delivery vehicles. The applicant is proposing to add one to two unmarked electric delivery vehicles to their operation, and so what that means is that these vehicles will essentially be unmarked. There will be no marking or any type of indication on the exterior of the vehicle that would indicate that the delivery vehicles associated with Megan's Organic Market or cannabis delivery, for that matter. That is a state requirement. An additional two full-time employees of at least 21 years of age would be hired to support this service. Vehicles would be equipped with GPS devices owned by Megan's Organic Market, as well as cameras that would be continuously recording during deliveries. And lastly, with fully enclosed and secure compartments for cannabis, cannabis goods storage during those deliveries. Delivery vehicles are proposed to be stored on-site in the existing secure delivery bay, so there are no physical changes to the site being proposed. So a little bit about the delivery services in general. So upon, you know, a delivery receipt or an online order, cannabis goods would be then loaded inside of the secure delivery bay. So to your right, you kind of have a portion of the site plan. So limited access intake office is connected to that secure delivery bay, which is where vehicles would be kind of loaded and unloaded. An inventory ledger with, you know, the entire delivery order, including SKUs, quantity, item numbers, that would accompany the driver, as well as a log of all stops being made during that delivery. Other than delivery stops, employees can only make stops for rest, fuel, and maintenance. At the time of delivery, the identity and age of a customer is confirmed via photo ID, and that's before any type of goods would be passed along to any customer. And actually, prior to that, typically during an online order, a customer would also provide a picture of their photo ID as kind of a pre-vetting prior to that. Any undelivered cannabis goods would be unloaded and returned to inventory inside of that secure delivery bay. So undelivered cannabis goods could be, you know, maybe the customer didn't have any cash on hand or enough cash on hand, maybe they rejected the, the order, maybe they changed their mind. Any of that would be returned to inventory the same day. That is also a state requirement. Delivery hours are proposed to be from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and that is consistent with the existing retail storefront hours that San Luis Obispo has. So as far as new conditions of approval, there are several associated with the request. Conditions number 10 and 11 are kind of just reiterating state law. So delivery employee requirements, employees must be 21 years of age, employed directly by the licensee, and always carry a valid photo ID. Condition number 11 just states that deliveries cannot be made to schools, daycares, or publicly-owned land. Conditions number nine and 12 are really just to further ensure public safety through retaining camera footage of deliveries and kind of just making sure that these vehicles are part of what can be audited or reviewed during our quarterly compliance inspections of operators. Conditions seven and eight are related directly to the delivery vehicles themselves. So vehicle parking, the secure locked delivery bay will be where vehicles will be parked during business hours and just for general long-term storage. One delivery vehicle can be parked overnight in the business area. The applicant does have an excess of five parking spots. As far as number of vehicles, what this condition eight sets is that the, you know, the max number of vehicles for this request can be two, and anything additional would be subject to the Community Development Director approval, instead of, you know, coming to the Planning Commission to add maybe one more vehicle. So Megan's Organic Market currently holds a valid operator permit, use permit, and state license, which authorizes it to provide delivery services under state law. The proposal complies with the city's cannabis and zoning regulations, and SOSAF is recommending that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution to modify use permit Use 0550-2019 to add delivery services to this operation. That concludes my presentation, and I welcome any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gomez. I actually have a question. Is the existing, so there's a bay that the delivery vehicle is in, so it's an interior bay that the, it's like a garage, like a carport that the car drives into? Is that already existing, or do they have to build?
Yeah, so that would be existing. That bay also serves as kind of the intake area for licensed distributors to drop off products. So it is secure, it's locked, it's already existing.
Cool. All right, thanks.
Can I jump in and ask a, okay, great. Can we go back to the, maybe the previous slide on condition number nine, I believe it is, for the camera? Are we talking about a dash cam facing outward, or are we talking about cameras facing inward into the, the vehicle as well?
So I will, the applicant is actually here, so I will actually have them answer that question. I would assume that it would be recording inside of the vehicle. This was part of their proposal in their application, and is actually not a state law requirement. So I'll go ahead and invite the applicant to answer that question for you.
Okay, so some of these conditions were basically brought forward by the applicant as, as kind of just extra measures to ensure safety and security of delivery, et cetera?
Yeah, particularly condition number nine was proposed by the applicant in their application to add delivery services. Again, a couple of them are state law, and condition number eight is really just to further reinforce that the city would be, you know, authorized to audit and review those deliveries vehicles during what we do quarterly compliance inspections.
Gotcha, okay. And then the other one, maybe it's just a misunderstanding on my part, but I know that there, the proposals for two delivery vehicles, but somewhere I read, one vehicle can stay in the business, parked in the business area. So does that mean the second vehicle has to be parked off premises overnight, or did I misunderstand that?
Yeah.
I think it might be the previous slide. I don't know if it's on this one, but.
No, it is condition number seven.
Oh, sorry, there it is.
No worries. So what this condition is saying, that, yeah, only one delivery vehicle may park overnight in the business parking area. That's really just to ensure that there's adequate customer parking, you know, for customers and EV vehicles, being that these are electric vehicles. For the most part, what we're looking for is for these vehicles to be, you know, parked in the secure delivery bay so that there's adequate customer parking.
Oh, I see. So they still have the space in the delivery bay for overnight? So it's, this is more intended for them to not make use of the parking space for customers on a regular basis, so to speak?
That, yeah, that's exactly right.
Gotcha. Thank you.
I have one more question, Ms. Gomez. So by default, is this going to allow two delivery vehicles by default? And then they would have to come in and ask for additional, not, not Megan's per se, but like any additional, any future cannabis stores that go in, they're entitled to have two max, and then a third or more by director approval? Did I get that right?
You got that correct for this particular case.
Okay.
The two-vehicle limit is what was proposed in the application, and so therefore that's what we're kind of setting it at this point. There's a, you know, there's a possibility that applicants in the future could apply for delivery and, and ask for three vehicles.
Okay, so it's not like a standardized number of, okay.
Correct.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff?
I have one quick question. So the site is on Higera, had an intersection that may be the most interesting intersection in the whole state with, it needs a, yeah, it needs a roundabout. I assume that transportation staff, et cetera, don't have any concern about more cars using that, that entrance and exit? It just, there's two diagonal roads, and there's lots of waiting, and when people choose also to walk across, then that adds some additional waiting, and once in a while you see cars turn right against the red light just because they got tired of waiting or weren't sure they were, they'd lost their turn or something. It's a confusing intersection in its own way, but there's no issues that have been raised by staff around any signage changes or anything for that intersection?
Yeah, yeah, that's correct. Transportation did review the request. They did not have any concerns over that. I think if anything, you know, offering delivery would actually reduce traffic coming into and out of the, the location.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no more questions for staff, does the applicant have a presentation? No? I don't see anyone clamoring for the podium, so. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
No, there's not.
Okay, and Commissioners, any other questions? Okay, and Commissioners, any other questions before we call for a vote? Doesn't sound like it. Okay, do I have a motion for a second, and a second?
I'll move to approve the conditional use permit modification as presented.
I'll check.
Madam Clerk, can you call for a roll?
Commissioner Flores?
Yes.
Commissioner Druckensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Munoz Morris?
Yes.
Vice Chair Collin?
Yes. All right, that passes. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. The business item before us next is to review and approve a draft response to the recommendation number six of the grand jury report, "Round and Round with Town and Gown." Would Deputy Community Direct, would Deputy Community Development Director, Tyler Corey, please report, present your report. That's a long title. Deputy Community Director, Deputy Community Development Director, got it.
All right, well, thank you, Vice Chair Toley, and members of the Commission. It's been a while since I've sat in this chair. I'm here with Timmy Tway, Community Development Director, and we're just going to present an overview of our response to the grand jury report. And I think Timmy's going to kick it off, and then I'll kind of go over some of the details of the, of our specific response.
Thank you, Tyler. Good evening, Timmy Tway, Director of Community Development. I don't know that I've ever sat in this chair in this capacity and gotten to present to you all, so thank you for having me. The item before you is the response to a, one of the recommendations from the grand jury report that has been assigned to the Planning Commission for response. The recommendation is that you review and approve the draft response to recommendation six of the grand jury report, "Round and Round with Town and Gown." For some background, in 2024, the grand jury convened to review town gown issues specifically related to fraternity and sorority operations in the city of San Luis Obispo. And on June 23rd, 2025, the grand jury submitted a report to the city with their findings and recommendations. And these findings and recommendations require a response from the City Council, the City Manager, and the Planning Commission to be responded to by September 19th, 2025. This report that was received includes seven recommendations. They are all in an attachment to your staff report. And specifically, the Planning Commission was asked to respond to recommendation six, which is what we're talking about this evening. The city is required to have one of four specific responses to each of the recommendations, either that the recommendation has been implemented, it's not yet been implemented but will be in the future, it requires further analysis, or it will not be implemented. And so before I hand it over to Tyler, I will just cover the recommendation in question. So recommendation number six that requires response from the Planning Commission was that the slow City Manager and Planning Commission should move toward adopting more uniform conditions for CUPs and enforcement of existing requirements. Due to the time span in which these CUPs were approved, the requirements are inconsistent. The city should consider using future CUP violations to determine if it is appropriate to revise these conditions to make them more relevant for today's environment. This may require consideration of additional code enforcement staff or alternative work schedules. And now I will hand it over to Tyler, who will further explain the draft response that has been provided to you in your packet.
All right, thanks, Timmy. This is just kind of the overview of the Commission's purview, which Timmy covered, which is to provide a response, one of the four responses to the presiding judge, and this needs to happen by September 19th. And in terms of what the city's response recommendation is, the draft response is that the, that it has been implemented, and that's been implemented to the extent practical and appropriate from the city's perspective. In terms of the specifics addressing each of the kind of components of the recommendation, back in 2018, the city did complete a comprehensive update to the zoning regulations. It also included a close look and update to the chapter that governs the fraternity and sorority land uses. This is where we did look at applying uniform conditions, looking at best practices, and basically updating our review process for new applications as well as existing. Second component kind of discussed a little bit about, does the city enforce CUPs? The answer is yes. The Planning Commission is well aware that since, over the last year or so, we've seen, I think, five of these, one new one and four re-reviews. And so this was an opportunity for the city to apply the updated code that we had from 2018, refresh some of the existing that, use permits that needed some updating and re-review, as well as, there were others that just were revoked. So that was kind of the outcome of those re-reviews over the last four years, or excuse me, over the last year. Code enforcement in general, it's basically a complaint-based program that we have. This is consistent with how we review complaints, not just for fraternity and sorority land use, maybe noise or other CUP violations, but other activities across the city, whether any municipal code violation would be basically responded to on a complaint basis. Other components of our response, basically, I wanted to touch on the fact that the community members aren't charged for staff time or resources to review complaints. I think that was brought up in the, in the report. We field those complaints, we collaborate with the police department, and then we do a field visit and issue a citation, or confirm whether a violation has occurred, so. But I did want to highlight that, because that was a point in the, in the report about cost. In terms of like the impact to our code enforcement team, the complaints roughly estimated at about six and a half percent or so of total calls and total complaints that were required to follow up on. Current staffing levels that the city has, we just don't have the ability to do proactive code enforcement, given the volume of requests and calls that we have for follow-up. There are certain instances where the city does go out and code enforcement does conduct some proactive schedules, terms of, or proactive enforcement for activities that they're aware of. One of them obviously would be rush, others were the St. Fratys event issues. So those are much larger, that St. Fratys is obviously a much larger issue. It had more of a police focus. But there are certain events that they do scale up for and do work out of normal work schedules. In terms of what's happening next, the City Council is going to be having a meeting to discuss recommendation one, two, four, and five of the, of the report, and that's happening on September 16th. And so that's the next opportunity for the public to provide comments and discuss this with the City Council. And then we're back to the recommendation was for the Planning Commission to review and approve the draft response, so then we could forward it on as we're required to. And that concludes the presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Planning Commissioners, any questions for staff? I'm seeing none, okay. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, we do not.
Very good. All right. Any discussion? Oh, yes.
I just had one question. In some of the letters that we got, they mentioned the, I don't remember, the AB5, whatever. And there was criticism that the report was not showing the addresses of the fraternities and sororities. And I went online to Cal Poly's site, and I saw the addresses listed today. So was that a change?
Thank you for that question. So there are, and John Mezapeza, Code Enforcement Supervisor, is here. He knows much more about this than I do, but I'm going to attempt to answer it. He will jump up if I'm incorrect. So as far as I understand, the university does provide a list of the houses that the fraternities and sororities have registered with the university. One of the concerns and complaints we've heard from the community is that Cal Poly also has a party registration process whereby they used to provide addresses when a party was registered, which helped us confirm whether or not a fraternity or sorority party was happening at a location that was not a CUP fraternity or sorority. In the last year or so, the addresses for those parties have not been listed. So that's, I believe, the addresses that maybe members of the public are commenting on in those comment letters that are different than they used to be a year or so ago.
Sorry, I might have a follow-up to that, because as I read it, my understanding was that no addresses were included on their website, and it just said it was changed to San Luis Obispo. But it sounds like we're now saying it's only the party addresses that aren't being listed, but others are? I'm a bit confused, I'm sorry.
Hi, I'm John Mezapeza, I'm the Code Enforcement Supervisor. Yeah, I'll give you a shot on this question, but essentially, when you go annually, the Cal Poly is supposed to produce a report according to compliance with AB, I forget what the actual city bill was called, but it's 524, which includes a number of things they have to report on, one of which is all of the locations that they recognize where Cal, where fraternities are located. And essentially, that list of addresses mirrors what we have on file for conditional use permits. But then, in addition to that, any sanctioned events are supposed to be registered with Cal Poly, and they are supposed to report on any of those events that occur. When they initially put out the first report, the addresses at where these events occurred were listed out, but then they made an interpretation to basically say, we no longer have to list these actual locations. We're just going to list the events that have occurred per fraternity or sorority that had an event. So the addresses where events have occurred are not being provided on those, on those reports.
Gotcha. Thank you for that clarification. I might just throw a quick curveball, since you stepped up so bravely and asked. So I mean, it sounds like in the recommendation, they're talking about an increase in staffing to address some of these concerns. Would that actually address these concerns, in your opinion? Because it seems, I mean, I understand that they need for more enforcement, I guess, of these violations, but it just seems like one of many things that need to happen, right?
Yeah, I don't necess, you know, I wouldn't be able to say for sure if we added a staff member, if it would be able to address the concerns directly or even better than we're handling them now. But when you, when we think about what, what's difficult about enforcing these, isn't necessarily that we don't have a staff member to go do it, but it's the information we have to collect. We have to verify that a sanctioned event occurred at these locations. And when you think about it, these locations are not just fraternities, they're also residences. And they are afforded the right to do certain things at their residences. They can have parties, they can have people over, they can, they can make noise, and it would just be in violation of the noise ordinance. But we have to be able to connect an event that occurred with a fraternity, something that a fraternity put on, which is becoming more and more difficult. They aren't advertising them as much as we, they used to in the past. They used to put them on Instagram or Facebook. I don't think they use Facebook anymore, but Instagram and other places. And we'd be able to say, oh, the location that this event occurred is advertised, that's the direct connection to the fraternity, that's not happening as much anymore. They also, when we go and knock and ask, will just say, oh, no, we just had friends over, which we don't have a way to verify further if that occurred. Now, they are required to report their sanctioned events to Cal Poly, and if we were able to have that list from Cal Poly of the locations of where those events occurred, it would be an easier connection. But that's not able to happen right now.
And is that something that can be required? I mean, I know that one of the letters that we received, there was mention of like suing Cal Poly essentially into compliance. And I'm not saying we need to go that far, but is there a path forward to maybe get that information? Or could Cal Poly be a more proactive neighbor in this respect, in regard?
That's a great question. One thing that we've tried to highlight throughout this process is that this is not an issue that is, there's one party that has the solution. I think that the, the town gown issues obviously will require Cal Poly to come to the table, the city to come to the table, landlords to come to the table, renters, students. It's going to take everyone to address this. And so we have been working proactively with Cal Poly to be really frank and honest with them about the things that we need to be able to enforce our codes and regulations. And so, you know, John has done some work in requesting these addresses and wasn't successful up until now, but there, you know, we're having ongoing discussions with them about the concerns of publishing these, but the importance of these addresses for us to be able to enforce our codes. And it's likely something that we will continue to look into how we can obtain these addresses.
Thank you.
Regarding the addresses and when are they published? If it's only once a year, it doesn't seem that would be that helpful, because you're going back maybe a year to put an event with a fraternity or sorority.
Exactly. The reports publish annually, but would include every event that occurred over the year that was registered with the Cal Poly. So we would be retroactively applying the violations that we found and say, oh, you did have an event, you were acting as a fraternity at this location, and that's in violation of our land use code. So it, it doesn't address it in the moment, but it is a way to keep them accountable if we can identify them.
And not all of the sorority and fraternities have a house, so many of them, yeah, are out just at different locations. And of course, some of the larger fraternities that have houses also have events off-site. It'd be really good if, proactively, I guess, the sororities and fraternities, don't they have to advise Cal Poly in advance of their events? It'd be really nice if it could be shared with the city then. Okay, thank you.
And we, to that comment question, we, again, that's one of the things we're working with Cal Poly on. So, you know, we've asked them, at least if they're going to have students register parties, to have a disclaimer on that registration that says, this registration with Cal Poly is not an indication that you are in compliance with city zoning codes. You must go check if this is a location that this party can have. You know, so we're working on things that, if we can't get that information in real time, at least we are trying to address some of the confusion that students may have over thinking, I registered my party, why am I getting in trouble for having this party in this location if I've told Cal Poly? So there are other things we're working on. You know, some of this is education, and John's team has done a lot to proactively go meet with the fraternities and sororities and campus staff on just educating as much as we possibly can, because it's going to take both education and enforcement, again, to address this issue as well.
Can I ask, like roughly, how many students now attend Cal Poly every year? Like, is it in like 18,000, 15,000, do you know roughly? In the twenties? And what capacity of housing do that? What percentage of those students could be housed on campus?
That's a great question. I don't know off the top of my head, but they're working on first and second years having on-campus housing.
And they've built quite a bit since, since I was there many, many years ago. But I'd be, I'd be curious to know just how many students, by necessity, you know, live in our communities, I'd say plural, not just San Luis Obispo. Of course, they live in other places too, but predominantly here. Just, I was just curious, thank you.
I actually have an answer from our, so 21,000 students and about 8,500 housed on campus.
Okay, so in the forty-something percent. Okay, thank you for that.
Any other questions or comments? Good? Okay, you sure? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second to adopt Staff Recommendation Number? Do we have a second to adopt staff recommendation number, we should choose one of the four, right? That's what we're tasked with?
The recommendation is to approve the draft response to recommendation number six.
Okay.
I'd like to comment a little bit in making that motion. I kind of read the response. I think, I think it's, this is very well-written, and I think will move us forward, but I think I also see that it, I think, hopefully successfully sends some signals to Cal Poly that this is a big problem and needs their undivided attention as well, and that we've got to come up with a common solution. So I'm kind of hoping this is, in fact, it appears to me to be a really good way to kind of open up and invite some real work and discussion. So I don't think it's going to answer every single question that anyone has written in about or that we've had since we've been, in a sense, on the front line in this board to review these, these conditional use permits and, in fact, rejected some. So I'm trying to be hopeful about this. That's the reason I want to support this motion.
I would add to your comments, too, that to me, this, this whole matter kind of makes it, makes it clear in my mind the need for finding a Greek row or kind of addressing more, more head-on this issue, because I don't think it's going anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's only so much we can proactively do, but I know we can't just like bulldoze over a neighborhood and establish that, but it would be great to see, again, you know, maybe working with Cal Poly to see if we can identify something there, so.
So we have a second, or, I'm sorry, we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Oh, I'll second, sorry, yes.
Madam Clerk, you want to call roll?
Commissioner Jorgensen?
Yes.
Commissioner Munoz-Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Flores?
Yes.
Vice Chair Collin?
Yes. Mr. Corey, since you're already there, do you want to give us an update for our next forecast?
Next regularly scheduled meeting of the Planning Commission is September 10th, and currently we do not have any items, so that's likely to be canceled, or very highly likely to be canceled. The next meeting, second meeting in September is on the 24th, and currently we do have one item. There's an amendment we're looking at to the zoning regulations in terms of its applicability. Specifically, the city has some projects that are basically, in terms of height, potentially exceeding some of our standards, where these features are for safety purposes, and so we're looking at an amendment that would address that issue, allowing the city, as an example, a parking structure, some safety fencing around the top of the structure that wouldn't require an amendment to their entitlement to have it built. So that's kind of where we're at with the applicability section. So we'll bring that back, hopefully on the 24th. Then from there would be a recommendation to the City Council on that amendment, and so we will, we will look at that on that date. And then looking out even into October, the first, the first meeting in October, currently no items, and then out at the second meeting, we do have a couple items. We're looking at a general plan amendment for water and wastewater element, and we're also looking at bringing our historic, historic preservation ordinance for an update, and looking forward to a recommendation from the Planning Commission to City Council on that, and this also includes our historic context statement. So, haven't done the update for quite a while, it's been part of our major city work program, and we're excited to bring that forward. It's, we'll be going through its review process at the CHC prior to coming to the Planning Commission, so you'll have the benefit also of seeing that recommendation review. That is the 22nd. Yep. And that concludes the forecast.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Okay, well, our next regular meeting of the Planning Commission is scheduled, technically scheduled still, for September 10th at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers City Hall in San Luis Obispo. That concludes our meeting today. Thank you.